We are recording? Okay, thank you. Welcome, everybody to the Bear Pit, the Committee of Whole Meeting of October the 28th, 2024. I'd like to acknowledge this meeting is being held in traditional territory of our First Nations neighbors, Prophet River and Fort Nelson. Further recognize that the treaty is that we recognize and the rights that are provided in those treaties. I want to say that we're all treaty eight people. And finally, celebrate the contributions and presence of the Maiti people in our region. Please be advised that tonight's meeting is available to the public to attend virtually is being streamed and recorded. Are there any council additions? Staff additions? Thank you. Is there any public that wish to comment? Seeing none, everybody's okay with the agenda? Good. That brings us to 5.1, Committee of the Whole, the Community Fire Smart and Resilience Committee for discussion. I'll please turn it over to staff. And this is a follow up to a discussion that we've that we started a while ago.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. As Mayor Fraser just mentioned, this is a follow up to discussion that was had on August 12th in the Committee of the Whole Meeting when we discussed when council discussed the Community Fire Smart and Resiliency Committee that had been formed. During that meeting, we talked about the intent of that committee, which has since been renamed to the Northeast BC Fire Smart and Resiliency Working Group. So that information was provided in a separate admin report. Information is being brought back to council tonight for consideration of whether or not a separate local community, community fire smart resiliency committee comprising of public representation should be or could be developed as a committee of council, and the report provides some options around the development or types of councils or committees of council. Turn it over for discussion.
Alrighty, the floor is open for questions or comments if anybody has any questions. Or Lisa or discuss. I'm sorry. I thought I turned that off. That's two twice today. I turned it back on and I shouldn't have.
It seems to get more aggressive.
It does. If I let it, if I let it run all the way through, it gets extremely aggressive. Anyways, I'm sorry. We're we're having a discussion. I I like the report. I myself, I I'm leaning towards an advisory committee. I'd 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 like to have a discussion about it, you know, I don't know if we want to talk about how many or whatever, maybe staff can just look after that, but an advisory committee to advise council with respect to what they think we should be doing around fire resiliency, what we should be doing with the plan. My question to Lisa is about whether or not that working group would be supporting this committee? Would some of them be on it anyways? Like, because there's a whole group, right? All of those agencies have something to do with wildfire and or planning. So do you see that? How do they? How do the two marry up?
So the the my initial thoughts were that an NRM staff representative would be essentially on both, like we would be facilitating both of those, and that would be the linkage back to that working group. Just to keep the working group at a more strategic level, but making sure that there is that linkage and sharing of information between the two.
Right, and they could be used as resource to to help educate the 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 advisory committee. I gotta go through all the committee. The advisory committee is that they would they would be available to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. And similar to our advisory committee for the OCP provide valuable feedback around if we, you know, if we draft a community wildfire resiliency plan, they would be integral to that review and to provide comment.
Right. And is there an expectation that somebody from council would sit on that advisory committee, or would it be a separate committee that advises the council?
I think that it's totally at the discretion of council of how they'd like to set up that committee.
Right. Those are my thoughts. What do you guys think?
Yeah, I I attended the the meeting held at the Woodlands in January. I think Scott, we were there as well. And that was a really productive meeting as far as the ideas and concerns. Yeah, I think it's just a great idea. I would invite any counselors that want to participate to come and join those discussions, but yeah, I think maybe having a a a certain individual, maybe a an alternate would help bridge the gap between the the committee and and council.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, so you threw me for a loop there with the alternate. So having somebody from council sitting there and an alternate.
In case they can't, yeah, like that would be something I'd be interested in, but I I I work a lot of evenings and weekends and meetings are sometimes difficult for me. So I I know if we had at least one and an alternate.
Right.
Then we could make sure that someone's there for every meeting. That would be beneficial.
Yeah, my thinking was that an advisory committee would be the way to go in terms of setting the terms of reference. I I don't know. I think I think I would want input from the group too. There's a lot of people in our community that want to provide input and they have a lot of great ideas. And so I would like to get information from them as to how they see this committee forming and then how how it could advise, come back to advising council. So and in in terms of having somebody from council on there, I absolutely think that we have to. I don't know that they have to be the facilitator, but maybe I don't really know. But I think it's important. I also think that because we all can't go to every meeting, I think it's this is vitally important that whoever from council is sitting on that that we get a report back to the rest of council. So whether that comes from that counselor or from staff, I think it would be really, really important that we hear all of that information without having to go to all of the meetings.
Anybody else?
Well, do we? Can you define this a little more clear for me? Is the Northeast PC Fire Smart working group, or is it more of a larger scope? Has it taken a larger scope viewpoint? And and what we're trying to do by establishing committee is to zero it into our community? Is that kind of? That's where we're really at? I'm trying to describe it because the overlap, like I always think of how committees on committees on committees, the stacking of committees or the manning up of committees in a small community like this over us over a singular concept around fire smarting or fire preparedness and so on. We we certainly need the grand scale of the Northeast, but we also do need to hone in. So is that really what it is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I I had the same question. I had a little bit of a discussion with 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 staff and and I think the working group is different agencies that have plans. And they came together because their plans over, they're not the same plan, but their plans overlap in different places, which then allows them to see if there's synergies between them and where they can work together on certain parts of their own plans. Right? So so fairly high level between these different agencies.
Yeah, so the working group currently exactly that is Ministry of Forests is working on that Wui project for the two kilometer radius around Fort Nelson and McConaughey. But at the same time, the community force is wanting to undertake wildfire risk reduction projects that fall within that Wui, and you can't have them working in isolation. At the same time, we're talking about developing a community wildfire resiliency plan for the community that has implications and relationships with the Wui. So without having those people all talking, it becomes very uncoordinated and inefficient. So that's the intent of the working group is to really focus on that high level strategic planning as well as look at grant opportunities and things like that to undertake work. The committee, if if council so chooses to establish one, could focus more on what do they actually see working for our community applying that local lens rather than that 25,000 foot level?
Right. And the liaison could take that information from the our committee and move it up.
That's right, without taking away from the working group's strategic level and almost muddying it with, you know, the details of the local level planning or ideas or whatever may come out of that.
Because it seems to me many of those agencies would want to hear from
Absolutely.
The advisory committee.
Absolutely. So one of the comments when I raised this at the working group meeting was probably not the right place for the public to be sitting in on the current working group, but definitely important for the public to be able to provide comments on some of the plans that this working group may come out with.
Got it? Are we clear?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm
It could evolve over time. It's new and both the working group and the committee would be a new thing and we see how it works. And then maybe at some point they do become one, or maybe they stay separate, or the working group goes away and I mean, it could look very different in a year, but.
So if our intent is to create an advisory committee, the first step is really a call for membership. Is that that? And then and then we hear how they see it. That's your point.
That's mine.
Yeah. So you you pull all of them together, or I mean, if you got 100, you've got to reduce it somehow, I think. If you got 100, it'd be amazing, but yeah, you'd have to try to figure. And then from there, they work on the terms of reference. What is it that we are going to do in this committee?
I only have one comment that 100 would be like out of this world. But I do, I think it's a great idea to have that advisory group or or committee because of the education, because there's lots of experts in the community on managing, creating fire resiliency plans, but the education of the community, the advisory group could work on the pamphlets or the training materials for that. And then the other thing is, what are other communities our size doing about fire resiliency? Like, what can we model after, rather than creating something from the bottom up, but looking at what's working in other communities and using that as a model? Fort Nelson First Nation also is working on a project for traditional burns, so that would also be part of the fire resiliency plan is going back to cultural burns and modeling after a community down in Williams Lake that's got a really, really successful cultural burn program.
Good. Okay, well, if staff can come back to us, right? Because we can't, we don't make decisions here, so if you want to come back to us with a bit of a report that we could put on to an agenda to authorize to make this happen. I think that's what I heard.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that be like sooner rather than later. So we have lots of people in the community that are waiting and watching and would really like to give their input. So I've just been telling them that, you know, we're hoping to get this advisory committee or whatever happens.
Could we have a report for the next meeting? Is that fair?
If it involves reaching out to the community and getting a, you know, a bunch of people at the table to figure out what this could look like, then I think it might be a bit challenging, but.
No, no, just just we have to, like, we can't make a decision to do it here at this meeting.
Just the report.
Just basically a report similar to this. First step is to, you know, gather. Yeah.
Yeah.
Gather folks and then and then second step is to work on the terms of reference. Council will be involved. At that point, then we can decide as a group, if we want all attend or if we want to appoint somebody, we can, we can do that at that next meeting and then and then she's on the road.
Yeah, I think basically, I mean, based on this dialogue, we want to have council have a discussion, we can provide a report that's similar to this, with the with the recommendation and maybe some frame, some basic framework and then council can provide direction through resolution and and we hit the ground running.
Good.
Yeah.
Let's do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the report, Lisa. The next report is the report of what happened at UBCM. So on the agenda is sort of the information that we took down there with us. So I think staff is going to have a conversation with respect to what they heard. I will chime in because when I'm at these meetings, I'm kind of in the moment and not really taking many notes. And to tell you the truth, there's so many of them until they jog my memory. It it all blurs together. So I'm, I'll let Scott lead this discussion and.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, so we 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 bounced around some different ideas and how best to do this and it just so much information that can be captured. And council's already received the documents that went down, the the packages with the topics and briefing notes that went down. So what we thought we'd focus more on is the dialogue that occurred in those meetings, which was basically us comparing each other's notes, similar to mayor. For me, I'm more focused on the media at the time, so I don't take as good a notes. And the best of days is compared to what Jay and Aaron do, but we sat and kind of compared what we had and and worked through that piece. So the intent to do it in this meeting was to be able to have the dialogue and for either Aaron or Jay to chime in at times too, and similarly with Counselor Souls and yourself, the mayor, to to discuss it. So we kind of attempted to go through the order that's on here. With the exception of any staff meetings that we had, we just linked them to if we're, if we have some updates or conversations regarding a minister meeting, and we had a staff meeting, we just, we just, we just go right into the staffing as part of discussion today. So as I said, in terms of who attended the meetings, UBCM, so the mayor, Counselor Souls, myself, Aaron and Jalen attended. We had a total of 16 meetings all in when you during that week, 11 of the, sorry, seven of them with ministers, four of them with provincial partner agencies. And then ministerial staff, four or five. This year, we took a bit of a different approach compared to some years past. More or less to do with the election. Because we weren't sure in terms of election outcome, what what ministers may or may not be in certain. What ministers may or may not be around after the election. So we actually had put put more requests than typical with staff, so we can either get that message sent across the staff and in some cases provide some additional context to the staff also. So I'll get started here. So our first meeting that we had was with with Minister Osborne. So the Energy Mine and Little Carbon Innovation discussions around the need for long term energy security was discussed. The reliance in the natural gas for for power generation and some of the challenges that we potentially foresee there was was part of the discussion. And supportive alternate energy sources was discussed as such as such as geothermal. There were hydro reps that were at that meeting because it's part of, I mean, the reason for the province requesting briefing notes or information or topics is so that they could prepare their own briefing notes and be prepared for discussion. So there were there was representation from BC Hydro at that meeting with the minister. And it was discussed about the vegetation management and the investment that BC Hydro has put into vegetation management to the tune of $1.2 million was the is a budget for 2024. And as forms a part of an overall $4 million investment, that's BC Hydro indicated was has been in place since 2021. The mayor discussed the challenges of EV infrastructure, especially not being part of the BC grid and the challenges operating some of the equipment or some of the potential equipment they've suggested would go up the highway as propane generators and whatnot, considering the climate. And then also urged the minister to continue work on carbon capture and sequestration as a potential incentive for to help alleviate the natural gas concerns that we have, especially in the wake of the NRM North North River Midstreams closure announcement. Anything else to add? Any questions, sir?
I think it's fair to say that the responses were generally muted because of the time of the year. And yes, I mean, Josie was engaged because that's just that way, right? So we had a good conversation about these things. No commitment. There was an admission on the part of BC Hydro around BC Hydro's lack of having capacity to deal with their hydro lines. They kind of indicated that not so much not so much a intentional shortage, but they have such a stringent protocol for having contractors that there's almost no contractors that work for BC Hydro. So anyway, that was something that came out of that one meeting. And there was a better meeting that we'll get to later with BC Hydro. That's true, yeah. But at this meeting, BC Hydro sort of this sorts that. Oh, I'm sorry.
BC Hydro just sort of sat back and and really didn't say a lot at this meeting. They were there, but yeah, the 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 meeting that we had with BC Hydro themselves later on, and we'll get into that, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Had some more detail, particularly around the right of ways.
Yeah.
So go ahead.
Just gonna add that although it's unrelated to the topics, she was because Minister Osborne was formerly municipal affairs, she did commend the Northern Rockies for their leadership and response during the evacuation. So and she's been to Fort Nelson, so she understands the challenges were. So you know, it's kind of nice when there's that level of familiarity and and recognition that was a tough job to take on, so.
And the mayor's right. I mean, the the level of engagement varied from minister to minister. We saw some ministers and can speak to it here when we get to them, like we're we're not necessarily that engaged. We're used to them being engaged and there's others that was it was almost borderline awkward. I would say in terms of the discussion, it was you know, you can tell where the focus was and it wasn't necessarily on UBCM in the meetings. It was the election, quite frankly. The next minister meeting was with the Public Safety Sister General, so Minister Farnworth. I'll say we always actually enjoy having a meeting with with Mr. Minister Farnworth as he's again, been to community before. He understands some of the challenges he commented on his trip up here the last time. And he said if he ever wrote a memoir, autobiography, he would have it in his, he'd have it in his book, his trip to Toad River. And he was able to see firsthand the challenges we have with being a remote community and the the lack of infrastructure at the highway in the in that in the in the case where we're dealing with that ministry courtesy was specific to cell service and whatnot. Our main reason for the discussions with the meeting request this time around was 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 specifically on the the public safety component and the concerns around the the policing locally. Our RCMP staffing at the senior leadership level, obviously, the mayor brought that forward and the concerns there. And then the mayor also commented, he brought it up at the last council. I mean, the mayor did comment to thanks to the letter in a response that 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 Minister Farnworth provided from Emily Davies' letter that was sent out. And and acknowledged the point that the minister made in the letter and that response about bringing concerns forward to your local detachment commander. Which of course the mayor preface around the whole was the problem and 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 Minister Farnworth's response literally looked at the mayor and said, so who do you talk to? And he's like, that's why we're here. So there was, there was a significant amount of discussion regarding that. And the fact that the remoteness of our community just magnifies that situation. It's not like, you know, your commander, if there's a shortage or whatnot in Fort Zing John, they're driving from Dawson Creek or vice versa. There's there's a significant distance and and we witnessed that even during the evacuation when things materialized where the commander that was up at a 14 John was on their way home that day and just rolled into Fort Zing John when we were, when we had to make the unfortunate decision to evacuate the community. So that was discussed. There was discussion around the frequency and severity of the the arson in the community and the concerns around that at the time. And also the level of awareness and community and the community members around the the staffing schedule, though in terms of you know, when police officers are out and police officers are in bed. So the ministry, the minister and ministry staff seemed quite receptive and concerned around, I mean, the the level, there seemed to be a genuine level of 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 concern around our concerns. And acknowledged the fact that, because we had met with the minister prior to staff, because we actually had a staff request and also and and the way the the requests go in is we had the request in in June for the minister meetings, but we don't, the requests aren't required or even looked at till like it was August 21st or something like that for the staff meetings. So at that point, those requests go in, we don't know if we're going to be successful in the minister meeting. So and when we were successful in the minister meeting, that's the staff came back, the PSSG staff came back and said, your request seems similar with the staff meeting. Do you still want to have it? Because you, because you obviously you're meeting with Minister Farnworth. And we said, yes, we still want to be able to provide because the topics are generally the same, of course. And we said, we still want to, we still want to meet because we want to provide context and it's a real concerning issue. And 15 minutes with the minister versus 30 minutes with staff. We 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 still want to meet. So they acknowledged that the meeting with the minute when we met with the minister, the staff acknowledged the fact that we had our meeting with them the next day and they were quite interested in to hear some more to to get into into a deeper dive into that discussion.
And the deputy minister from the ministers meeting explained to us that although they provide oversight on the RCMP, they do not tell the RCMP what they do and what they don't do, right? It's it's a kind of an oversight. But that he was, he was going to have a conversation.
Yeah.
And so that was the end of the discussion that that I recall that he was going to go out of there and he was going to have a conversation. Now, whether whether the response we saw from the RCMP just a couple of weeks later came from that or was partially from that, we definitely saw some response here after after the after that meeting, or whether the RCMP just figured it out that we got guns ringing out in our community. It's time for them to act or something. I I I don't know the answer to that.
I have a suspicion. It's a bit of a little combination of all the above.
Yeah, so maybe just we all know how it is. You don't, you don't actually tell them, but you have a, you know, a bit of a conversation about what's going on and and that tends to loosen the wheels a little bit. So I I hope that that and I felt like that was one of the best meetings we had with respect to reaction from a minister and staff.
Yeah. Which fast forward to the next day, we actually met with the staff. Similar similar concerns were raised in that meeting. We were able to provide some additional context and a and a little bit more specific about the local safety issues. And 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 get into the, you know, some of the things that were occurring in community that frankly, I know we said if they were happening in Vancouver, there'd be press conferences and media and everyone would be going that like like ramping this stuff up and 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 we're we're we continue to see hit fresh be frustrated by what we perceive to be a lack of from the policing side, or I mean, take it seriously. Talked around the challenges regard, well, talked about the potential for for vigilantes to to take on, take things into their own hands. That's a serious concern. They indicated, the staff indicated that you know, typically if there's a vacancy at the senior level or NCO level in a community, that a lot of times the district super will kind of step in and 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 take over, have meetings. And we did indicate that there was backfilling that was occurring from other detachments, but not from a local perspective and and quite frankly, they have their day jobs too. They have, they they weren't just moved here. They were doing both. And that's why there was a level or there was a rotation and whatnot. And quite frankly, the because we want to confirm that, you know, have we had conversations at the district level at North District? We said absolutely come firm, you know, the 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 challenge is just even to get a response at times. And and then they asked, they'll use you that those particular roles, they'll actually come meet with council. And he said, we haven't met that level of the organization.
Yeah, our discussion about statistics this year fell out of an envelope. Where normally, where normally you have the detachment commander here talking about what they've done and what the plans are for next year. And so, you know, really put across that local conversation is just not happening. The communication with the local is just not there.
And they, I guess, similar to the conversations we have with the minister, there seemed to be a a genuine level of receptiveness in terms of their concerns and and we made the comment, or I made, I think I made the comment something to the effect of, you know, we do understand the ministry's role that, you know, you you are at arms length. You're not in the operation. You're not, you're not dealing with the operational activities within the RCMP. You ensure that there's a, you know, they're responsible to have the police force and to provide public safety as as a ministry, but they're not giving operational direction, say, right? And I said, I understand you have limitations. And I think the response was, oh, we have our ways. And I think, and I think there were some conversations, quite frankly, because a couple of phone calls did occur actually just prior and afterwards that I don't know would have happened from from levels of the RCMP if if that those conversations didn't happen at at the at the ministry level. And the other thing that was, you know, when you, when you have those conversations, you you don't necessarily build relationships, but you definitely, you definitely put a name to a face and you understand what the roles are and you and you you get a bit of an idea if if you do reach out to the certain individuals at that ministry, if you're going to get any reaction or not. And quite frankly, when we, you know, the following week, the week after UBCM, when when things start to ratchet up, we were having issues on Willow Road and we had a fire down and down and 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 Billers and then back at Willow Road and then the truck behind it. down and 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 uh Billers and then back at Willow Road and then the truck behind it. Um, I reached out to that specific contact. And I I mean, I reached out to anyone who listened to the R C M P, but I also reached out to the contract and 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 contact in ministry and said, you know, since our meeting last week, this is what's occurred and I list, I listed it, right? And again, not sure if the cavalry rolled in as a result of that, but I don't think it hurt, to be quite honest, right? Because that's when things really started to uh, we start to really see some resources be be shown, brought in the community. So I think it was definitely worthwhile to have the meetings with the minister and and with the ministry staff for sure. Anything else? Uh. Environment and climate change strategy. This was a we, so so Minister, so Minister Heyman, so um, we've dealt with the minister before he uh was, I'll say, less engaged at that meeting. Um, didn't really say much at the very beginning. It was either Deputy Minister A D M that was doing the majority of the talking and and he didn't uh um the minister didn't say a word until probably the last three, four minutes of the of the meeting. Um, but uh
It's surprising because normally he's very engaged at the start of the meeting and he didn't.
He is, yeah.
I almost thought that maybe he was sick.
Yeah, we weren't sure if there was something, but it just, it just, it's, it definitely seemed different because we've had meetings uh outside of U B C M. I mean, virtual, but with with the minister and and uh no shortage of words typically. So it was, it was it was definitely not something, it was, it was unexpected, I'll say. Um. There was a focus and discussions in there brought up around the uh the amount of land base impacted by wildfire and the reliance on the uh data that is felt to be dated or inaccurate, that is driving the carib- caribou protection uh and restoration restrictions. And uh a pause in the process was requested, basically. Um. Again, no commitments and whatnot, but uh that was, that was thrown out there. Uh, discussions around the acquired campground outside of Montreal Lake. So a a little bit of the same, what was already communicated through staff prior on the fact that uh you know, there's, there's some, there's some funds in next year's budget. Of course, the budget's not approved yet, but they have some uh funds shoehorned for additional work uh at that campground. And the original intent at this moment point is to open it up as a bit of a rustic campground. And and hope that it's open next season. Um, so not the full fledged service with water, sewer and power as they originally thought of upfront, but they're hoping to possibly get to that, but to 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 kind of bridge the gap is to have it open as more of it just as is, I I'm thinking. Um. Something's, something's better than nothing.
Yeah.
Um, and there was discussions around, you know, having some level of public engagement in terms of what the public would like to see as 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 what the uh camping spot services and whatnot. So, so that was um discussed and the mayor brought that up. Um. The mayor expressed appreciation for the engagement with regards to the M K planning for the backcountry parks and just, just being part of that. The mayor and part of it had witnessed it firsthand in terms of uh how that engagement occurred and and uh it's good to go into these meetings, guns ablaze, and it's also give appreciation where it's due. So so that was good. Um, and then there's, there was discussion about the out uh output based pricing. So the carbon tax essentially um was discussed and and the ministry, the staff communicated that there would be seem, what we got out of it is little impact currently on the existing producers based on the delay. So like an eighteen month timeframe, even though uh certain pricing components might be communicated as they take effect. They don't necess- or or this is what comes into play. They don't necessarily take effect at that time. So there was our understanding is that the producers would possibly see an impact on the road, but they weren't seeing immediate impacts based on the way the the output pricing uh mechanism works. Um. So, uh. They discussed, uh, they were aware of some of the challenges that producers have with with some of the policy change or legislation changes that were coming through when it comes to output pricing. He talked to this, uh, they indicated that they uh were in discussions and negotiations with various producers, even to the point where they have some N D As in place where they they couldn't, they couldn't discuss everything because obviously the information is protected. Um. And uh they also acknowledged or or indicated that the output based pricing system being developed is is for the Ministry of Energy Mines and low carbon innovation.
Yep, go ahead.
Just want to go back a moment to the campgrounds. Um. Um, was there any response to the fact that the Summit Lake washroom was out of commission for the entire season because there was no budget to repair the stairs?
No. So. So the stairs are getting replaced. Um. The process seemed, and this is us having conversations with the ministry staff, not at U B C M, just outside of that conversation. So the last that we heard is that the stairs were getting replaced. They actually had the either had or found the budget or funds to be able to replace them. But by the time they got through the procurement process to uh award that there was a likelihood that the contractor would have it replaced before the season ended. So they might be replaced now. We don't know that, but but that that's what we got back. So.
Yeah, and at the meeting, it was just basically, we have a small budget.
Yeah.
Small budget. That's all I said. We have a small budget.
Again, if this was a park down south anywhere and the only working washroom was not working.
We used, we used, we can get into that a little later. We used a tourism meeting we had too to discuss some of the challenges we see with you know, tourism or future tourism and the fact that, you know, the budgets, the budgets are pittance, right? I mean, there's things that we do, frankly, frankly, that we shouldn't be doing. I mean, I think since the last signs that got replaced for all the trailheads and stuff, it was a partnership that we added some funding that we received, but they're getting sun baked now and and it's just, I mean, you talk about the the natural beauty of of, you know, the north or B C and I mean, we're not gonna argue to say uh or 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 not agree with the fact that what we see up here doesn't necessarily seem to fit with what occurs down south for sure. Um. Next meeting was emergency management, climate readiness. So E M C R, so with Minister Ma. Uh, appreciation was expressed in Minister for staff support throughout the evacuation. Um, the mayor talked about the demands on local government and on staff, especially the executive staff, then local government uh during emergency management situations and how essentially we've had full seasons that have been have come and gone where we've had staff dedicated during the last, last year E O C with the amount of days E O C was activated. So two thousand twenty-three and then two thousand twenty-four was similar but worse um to evacuation uh and and the challenges uh that is, especially the smaller organizations have like us, um where we're, we're wearing multiple hats in our roles, which just basically you shift your focus and things don't get done on the other, with the other hat that we'd be wearing. Um. The mayor spoke to need around the flexibility uh within the new Edma uh regulations that were being developed. Um. And discussed the need to work and get that support from E M C R uh with the utility operators, i.e. B C Hydro is an example, so that uh to ensure that right of ways are adequately managed, especially in high risk areas. Because that was when we talked about the manage, the amount of right of ways that B C Hydro has was like, well, one of the areas you can focus on is areas that are level four, five drought that uh that have a higher likelihood if a tree hits a power line, that's gonna create a bigger issue, right?
Yeah. And you know, how to eat elephant one bite at a time. You've got to start somewhere and and Minister Minister Ma recognized that this is a B C Hydro responsibility.
Yeah.
You know, they have to look after the right of ways. So that's, that was a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have anything to add to that one? You could. Um. We also met with the M C R staff uh and and relayed similar messages. Uh, discussed around the demands on local governments. Um. One of the areas that Aaron emphasized during the meeting was was the need for M C R to have ample capacity within the ministry to provide critical support for communities during activations. Uh, particularly in light of the Edma legislation and a lack of regulations to accompany it. Um. We're we're, we're some concerns at the regional level around the capacity component um in in and the lack, I guess because it's unknown where things will land from regulate, regulatory or regulation perspective, there's concerns that there might not be adequate capacity um to support the recovery in the planning component. That's not staff piece. And we got the answer we thought we're gonna get. It was not we wanted to get it, but we just assumed is is while there is provincial capacity, but the challenge is we've, we have, we have much better luck, quite frankly, dealing at the regional level with who's at the regional level versus the provincial level in many cases, right? Trying to get someone's attention and Victoria is a lot different than getting the attention at a Prince George, especially when we're and we're fortunate to, from a regional perspective and also the people in those roles, right, her. Um, understand they've been here many times. They understand the the uniqueness, the challenges and and I think, I mean, if anything, we're even just trying to support them. Um, with uh concerns that there, you know, is there going to be adequate, adequate capacity to deal with some of the new requirements that Edma has uh that's gonna be laying out. And we also discussed the eligible reimbursements for L G for the local governments during emergency events, talked about how certain, certain things have been um denied for us as an organization where we talked about uh the uniqueness of a remote community and some of the challenges. How, again, it's this one size fits all approach where everything's, everything's, everything's painted with a broad brush and uh it's easy to say no, but we have a pretty good story to back up the reason why we think something should be justified. We talked about the the food and the dogs and, I mean, again sort of becomes frustrating with us because people have no idea that what we deal with, right? They're like, well, your bylaw can do this and your, and your animal control can do that. I'm like, hold on, that's a contractor. We don't have S P S P C A. We don't have this. And we're four hours away to near its community. So, um. It was good dialogue, but at the same time, it it didn't seem to resonate as we had hoped. Um, nothing against the people in the roles, but again, it's, it's just some people, unless unless you experience it or know it, they don't really know what we're dealing with up here, right? It's just a completely different world, so. And I might have had a small rant about how the committee was picked. Uh. Not becau- I actually said I'm gonna rant now, but I not, not because they actually had the control, it was more on the say like, wouldn't you want to actually have some involvement as a, as an agency? Right? Like I, I, I was trying to, I was, they didn't bite at all, but I was, you know, trying to get across like as a, as an agency, wouldn't because it really resonated with me when I communicated. I'll get further into that later with the conversations with U B C M is is is, you know, when they made a certain comment, they're like, well, what does, what does the E M C R um support have to do with this process? And it's like, well, I would think they'd have a lot to do with the process considering they're the agency that provides the service, right? So I'd ask like, you know, in terms of the the committee, the committee, pick picking the committee development of that committee for the, for for the development of the regulations, like I I had to ask them like wouldn't you think you'd want to have more involvement in that process?
It, it was almost like they saw it as tick box. It didn't, it didn't, it didn't impact them. It was something that needed to be done and it was handed off to somebody else. They
they were literally like, okay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I was, I was like, okay. It was a waste of breath.
Yes.
It was bizarre, wasn't it? Yeah, I was like because, because I was hoping to get something, I was hoping to get a bit of reaction and get something from them to say, yeah, we would like to be more involved. But and maybe they were prepped for it because we mean, it wasn't like it was in something, something that we kept secret, right? But so anyhow.
I came around and asked the minister to put her finger on the scale to let Aaron on the committee. It didn't go anywhere.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, it was, sorry, we had um a conversation with an E M C R staff member a week and a half ago. So they're now looking at revising the um financial guidelines. So in terms of what is or isn't an eligible expense under an emergency. And this E M C R staff member said that they were asked by the provincial, their provincial counterparts down in Victoria to say, well, we're just gonna use that task force committee that we struck, you know, a year and a half ago, and we'll just ask them what they think we should do with the financial guidelines. And the staff member said that is absolutely the worst thing that you could do.
Hmm.
Because that task force that was created two years ago did not have any rural, remote representation. And that's where the um, that's where the rubber meets the road. And that's where you're gonna find communities that don't fit in that little box that they seem to be creating where everybody they want us to fit into. So it, that message is still not getting through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we'll keep trying. They know who we are.
Yes, they do.
They might not be able to point us out on their map, but they know who we are. Um. Meeting with uh Minister of Municipal Affairs, so Minister Kang, were required as part of our I D C A agreement to meet annually with uh the minister and and the staff. Um, so it's, you know, brief discussion about the I D C A agreement. Um, and then uh the mayor did talk about, because they are the ministry responsible for immigration provincial level. Um, so the minister did bring up the concerns around the uh federal program changes that are in, you know, will most likely quite possibly impact the uh local members of this community who who live here and uh put that plug in there to see if there's any kind of support that can occur from 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 uh that that ministry. Um, and then we talked about or discussed the potential impacts of the N R M, the the North River uh midstream closure announcement and the potential uh that that could have on delinquent taxes, um not specific to N R M, but just even the producers. Um, we continue to raise the concern annually with the ministry around the the mechanism of delinquent taxes and the challenge we have because it's just unique to us since we've become uh since, since we were incorporated as a regional municipality. So we're bringing up annually, um and 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 advise that there's a possibility or a likelihood that there'd be a, an increase in in tax write offs due to to delinquent taxes in the future. Um. We also met uh with ministry staff, so municipal affairs staff presented a draft copy of the A I D P, so the annual infrastructure development plan, which is uh done uh required. Uh, the deadline for that is the end of this month. Which basically it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a report card that acknowledges or outlines what what projects occurred based on what we said that we do, uh, because we do a June progress report and then we do this A I D P in in October. And then also indicates what the plan may look like for for next year. So we presented that because usually we 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 provide the draft at that meeting. It's not required. We just do, do it as part of the uh, we we say we've operationalized the process. We uh with that staff at that time, we've been discussing or hoping to get into some further dialogue around the potential to increase funding. I mean, that's gonna be our end goal. Um, and utilize affordability and uh uh, we'll call it the Fort Nelson factor um in regards, in regards to cost. So one of the things the program didn't acknowledge, the I D C A program didn't acknowledge uh is is it didn't factor in inflation or anything. So your projects that you plan for uh are two thousand fourteen dollars and those dollars don't go the same distance today. So this year is our five year window for the indicators to be reviewed. Um, because of course, the agreement origin was ten million a year by the province. And then five years in, they reduced it to five and they have the indicators, which is gas flow uh transient population or airport numbers and then and the population of the community, which a formula spits out to say if you'd receive further funding or not. Um. We were, we're taking a bit of a different angle as part of this process to uh support our information and justify the fact that it's cost us a lot more to provide services to the community from a capital perspective. And we, you know, used forty fourth street as as an example in terms of what that original budget was and where it landed. The challenges we're having to even just acquire contractors, to get contractors to bid on jobs up here. Um, and we did some uh we've done some comparisons between us and some larger centers, uh northern larger centers, so Grand Prairie, Edmonton, Prince George, and then Vancouver in terms of how the inflationary measures and what real time numbers. So we're talking, we provided comparisons of what our projects and procurements or or tenders look like compared to those and ours have gone up. Have escalated at a much faster pace, higher pace than other, other departments. So I, so we're working on that in the background, but but our but our, our goal is to to have the conversations around the fact that it's, it's becoming increasingly challenging from affordability perspective to 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 maintain a level of service from an infrastructure perspective based on the fact that it's, that the dollar is not going as far as it did, but it's going a lot less farther for us than other, than other communities based on the remoteness and the challenges we have, right? And uh use examples of challenges we have with Northern Health and the C T scanners, an example, in terms of the cost of C T scanner would be in there. And uh and the ratio or the formula that they're using just because of what they're seeing, like the farther north, so. So again, it it's, there was, it was, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts with that. Um, it's not just the the ministry staff, it's the minister's support of the province and the Treasury Board too, but that's, that's a bit of an angle that we're working on right now and uh and the Treasury Board too, but that's that's a bit of an angle that we're working on right now and and had some really good conversation. I think our meeting went much longer than the half hour allotment, but they get a they get a special room and everything. We're not in there with all the everyone else doing the speed dating and all the noise in the background. So. Jobs, economic development, innovation. So Minister Bailey, uh that was a bit of a different conversation. Um when you talk about where we may be located on a map and and knowledge of us as a community, it was a bit, I'll I'll be honest, I mean, I was deflated after the conversation in terms of not knowing where we are or what we have, you know, knowing the conversations that we've had over the past few years, the battles that we've picked and I've picked with ministry staff within that ministry regarding the rail line and to say that it's politicized and and, you know, talking to assistant deputy ministers or deputy ministers. And uh now that was during Minister here. Uh so so we're having Calendays when Minister Callum was was that minister was the minister for that ministry. And then to sit in a meeting and have a meeting where, quite frankly, we're asked if we actually have a rail line that comes to our community or not. Are we looking for funding to upgrade a rail line or do you already have? Do you already have a rail line to your community?
It was it was obvious that that the deputy ministers didn't let her know what our rail issue was. Right? And those are deputy ministers that we've been working with or the staff have been working with for years. And the minister didn't even know that we had a rail lines coming into the community.
Yeah.
It was yeah, it was like a gut punch.
Yeah, it was. So, I mean, it was just it was discussed around the need for local forestry manufacturing and the significant limitation being the rail line and the ability to get, you know, products to market. The fact that uh, you know, the need for investment aligned beyond federal funding is was 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 emphasized. And also discussed was the reduction of natural gas economy and the need for favorable provincial policy to support to support uh uh investment in production in in this in this community. So, yes, that was I guess that was that was a a unique one and clearly I'll I'll be honest, the focus was on the uh election.
Yeah.
Tourism, arts, culture and sport. Uh Minister Popham, we always will Council Soul also really enjoys this. When I uh being the previous ag minister uh um was Danny Wells, so uh and she's uh and 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 she's well informed in her even in this ministry. So so uh um it was iterated that tourism remains a strong economic driver for the air NRM. And it's especially given the downturn in the other in in the other sectors that we're seeing um talked about permitting uh and the challenges or permitting for some of the uh uh operators who want to expand their services up highway um becomes uh can become frustrating and challenging and having to jump through the hoops. Uh mayor brought up the thirty by thirty goals and the impacts it could have on the land base. What's the big deal and 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 the potential or risk that it might restrict that country accommodations uh? Did discuss the need for basic tourism infrastructure, and this is where you get the Munch Muncha Lake and the lack lack of camping amenities, right? And and the fact that you can't camp at a pullout because there's no overnight camping. So you're you want more people to come to the region to enjoy the region, but when you get into Stone Mountain or sorry, Muncha Lake Provincial Park, unless you're in a designated camping area, you're not and it's not a lot of camping areas, right? Um so it's a bit of a
So they're ripping right through.
Yeah.
Because there's no place to stay.
So so there was there was some good dialogue about that, which then led into some discussions and regarding to potential funding opportunities. Um funds that we we weren't aware of or opportunities I don't think we were aware of, but I think it was the when when the funding is announced is very, it's 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 kind of end of season. It's almost like they look, they look at funds, budgets and and then they have these funds that they they make available, which is kind of almost last minute, I guess, right? Which we had was indicated or suggested that next year it'd be part of more of a fulsome budget so that the the more of an annualized program because it's almost annualized now, but it's not it's not budgeted per se. It's happens every year, but it's happened towards the end of the year when they look at that.
And they had the the statistics there. They looked through and said, well, you guys haven't applied for any of this before.
Yeah.
And we said, what is that? And that's when they explained that at the end of, you know, it's end of year money sort of leftover in their budget that they get out. And yeah, you've got to be ready.
For it. And that was the one that that was the fairs, festivals and the fence stream, which we did. I know that the which isn't the same one though, because like, because I was getting at the top, be honest with you confused because I know those funds that was accessed or was successful with the uh society. So I and this didn't seem to be the same. That's when they popped it out and said, no, no, you haven't. You haven't received this. This hasn't been applied when anyone in Fort Nelson. So so that's a follow up piece that we have to uh look at. We were declined the Minister of Forest Meeting, but we did meet with forestry staff. Uh we did provide appreciation because that's where BC wildfire sits on the uh sits sits within the Ministry of Forest. So we uh provide our appreciation regarding the collaboration relationship we have with the local BC wildfire staff um and and the IMTs, the instant management teams that came to community. Uh we discussed the need for increased capacity at the local zone office and what we see there and and uh the condition of that particular area, um lack of amenities and the fact that they have to shut it down when it gets cold and the same fires continue to burn. Like we witnessed last year, we saw, you know, the 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 base being shut down because pipes are starting to freeze and whatnot, but there's still fire in the landscape, right? And uh you said, you know, there's there we really want to push this issue because it's 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 frustrating for the local staff out there. We don't want to throw them under the bus or anything. But we wanted to because we wanted to support them. But what we see is that there needs to be a an increased emphasis and focus on on that particular area. Uh especially considering wildfire seasons are starting earlier and later or not ending at all, what we're seeing. I mean, I mean, I'm really happy to see the snow with minimal frost in the ground right now. Um but we need an awful lot of it, otherwise, you know, we're we're all preparing for a a similar start to the season next year unless we see some dramatic uh weather changes. So um spoke to the concept of exchanging to the mayor, actually sat with the staff meeting because I spoke to the so mayor spoke to the concept of exchanging the potential of exchanging crown land with with a, you know, that that areas that might have a high potential wildfire risk or an area that you might want to do treatment management from a fuel reduction perspective within the grounded community with the possibility of future development, maybe as uh within as as ag land, for example, right? So you might have an area that might be, you know, currently not under ALR or or as egg land and it might be, it might make sense to pull the tree, pull pull the fiber out of it, reduce the fuel and and if it makes sense, uh an opportunity to pull or to 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 have it as agricultural land. Um because we know how that works when it comes to fire breaks or or to assist with fire with fuel mitigation. So so they were receptive to that. And it was noted that workers on their way with uh First Nations on the Liard Basin Land Use Plan Agreement and noted that there's an opportunity for the NRM to participate as part of that process.
And that's with the casket.
Yes, right. Yeah. We did, which actually, I don't know if I circulated because we did actually bring those maps. That's conversation you and I had council agreeing around overlaying maps.
Yeah.
Did I ever provide them to you?
No.
Of course, I never. We brought them with us and 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 distributed. So that's something I'll distribute to council. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, with that, which outlines the wildfires in twenty three, twenty four, the caribou reduction areas, the MK area and the proposed uh land use uh the uh the yard uh.
And does it show that there's nothing left for?
It's it's a pretty big park. It's fairly significant. Um and uh
Picture says a thousand words, right?
It 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 tells a picture. Yeah, it definitely tells a story for sure. Yeah. We met with Waterlands Resource Stewardship Staff, uh also spoke uh about the value of collaboration when developing plans such as the Caribou Plan. So, you know, concerns that when originally when we thought as an organization to have a seat at the table, we had discussions and then there was a version that was provided after the fact that we weren't part of. And and just discussed around the concerns there. Talked about the concerns around the 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 plan and what we feel is being utilized with dated information um that we feel is dated. Part of even the wildfires occurring and now the amount of wildfires in the landscape, there's concerns there that that might have been a caribou area before, but might not necessarily be one today. And and that's conversations we're having with our neighbors also regarding regarding that, just to see what their thoughts are because I think there's some um agreement there that that those information that's not necessarily, that's that's driving decisions that might not necessarily be the most accurate information or appropriate.
Yeah, it's time for a new baseline, essentially. Yeah.
The ministry staff noticed that that some areas were selected based on areas that were lower quality fiber and suggested that studies indicate that care have not evacuated burned areas and other similar areas across the country that have experienced similar events, but so I get to the day just prove it.
Yeah.
Demonstrated with information. So um so we so that was that staff meeting. We didn't meet with the minister. BCHS, so the agency we met with BCHS, we had a good, we had a reasonable conversation with them. I mean, one one of the things I can say about BCHS over the past few years and my involvement and direct involvement with them is 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 they've been receptive to our concerns and and we've actually seen change at times based on a lot of the feedback we provide. And I think it's important to provide that feedback when they do occur because we walk in and beat up people. And uh and 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 provide feedback, constructive feedback and they change course or at least do what they can from from our perspective that demonstrate that they're making an attempt. Um I think it's important that we acknowledge that and we've and we've seen that. So we we actually had some good conversation. Um they discussed the reliance uh on moving patients via air with that these diversions and and the importance of them, what they're really focused on. They talked about our uniqueness. They discussed the uh the the rotary wing that the helicopter that's sitting in Fort St. John and the two fixed air wing, the rotary wing for sure. I think it's a month a month. Each month they have to basically justify that that particular um apparatus being there based on the need because it's not just part of a normal budget, but it's, we did talk about, you know, the potential opportunities of hopefully having something there full time in the future based on the fact that when you look at a disruption in service from the service they provide, it's again, it's magnified where we are just because of the the distance to travel, right?
Is that full time in Fort St. John?
The plane, the the helicopters, yeah.
Right. So we need to do some um information gathering about that rotary helicopter service. Um because the information that I'm getting is it's not necessarily a solution that's going to work here. So we should maybe
Yeah, I was shadow about that. Yeah.
We should, yeah.
For sure. Um they're doing a either doing a study or is completing the study on the potential to add for more resources. So basically a second car locally full time. Um and again, they're 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 doing this study on a community by community basis. So they're recognizing the challenges to provide the service locally based on the distance that those, there's no backup. Right? No backfill capacity or if there is, it's going to take a while to get here. So um so that was that was good discussion and 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 I mean, some and and they discussed the challenges they have as a as a as an agency within the province too, in terms of accessing funds and what they have to fight for. And I mean, they're all all different agencies are fighting over the same nickel. Talked about a new critical care care team that's based in Prince George to support fixed wing and rotary ring resources there, which is good. And and so they've been really working towards uh from what they've indicated uh upgrading the service within that and the training, the certifications provide a certain service and 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 a lot of it or she's been driven by ER closures, but you know, an increased level of service is required because they're they're moving patients, critical patients that um are are being moved to a certain area in many cases because service is not there locally because of an ER closure. So, yeah, so that was that was a a a reasonable conversation with them, but we'll circle back with you. Also agree, we discussed that piece. That's the first I heard of that was we have talked directly with Lee about that service. Um oh, and the other piece is that new aircrafts are changing and they're they're in the in process of uh switching over to actually have the ability to land on gravel runways. So the actual fixed wing aircraft, so the medivacs, which is uh good for places like Told River and things like that to land in the runway there. So uh met with BC Hydro. Um so a lot lot more discussion and detail. They actually had someone uh virtually joining in to talk about uh how vegetation management occurs and what they do there and how they fly over the lines and and determine it. They're more or less from that high voltage distribution system like say Rainbow Lake to uh to to Fort Nelson versus the local distribution network. Um or maybe it's the other way around. I can't call it. Yeah, transmission versus distribution. But indicated uh, you know, the process they go to, they did as as Counselor Souls mentioned, they discussed the uh challenges they've have had around acquiring appropriate contractors because it's a specific skill set of certification that's required to 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 deal with that vegetation around those high voltage lines. As I mentioned earlier, they again, they talked about um the uh one point two million dollars that was part of the budget this year to look after approximately one hundred and sixty two kilometers of line. Which I think a portion of that is vegetation management along the transmission line to Rainbow Lake because of course, a lot of work was done there. Uh and that was more around just trying to prevent the disruption of service because the modifiers burning in the area taken out that line. And discussed uh the application they have submitted or sorry, that that Enbridge has submitted to supply natural gas, looking just more of a for that uh um long term gas supply to the Fort Nelson Generating Plant, given the current situation with with North River. Northern Health met with Northern Health, so Cheryl and Steve Raper. Um discussed the CT scanner project has advanced beyond the business case. It's now a place to determine the funding sources. This, we can have a lengthy conversation with this. So I'll just kind of keep stay with the highlights and um estimated that approximately two and a half million will be needed to be raised from external funding in addition to what the regional hospital district funding would be. Uh then discussed uh workers on the way. Obviously, there's a lot more discussion in the CTPs, but we'll save that for a regional hospital district meeting probably and get get more into detail with that. And I, we are looking at getting uh I'll call it the appropriate players together with Northern Health. So as staff, we can have a discussion around where we are with this project and what in terms of the budget, the potential, a lot of options have been looked at when it comes to portable unit. There's a, there's a, there's a, there's a lengthy list of items you want to talk to them about, but we want to make sure we get the right people in the room. Um they're asking to make sure the right people in the room so we can get a fulsome, a fulsome answer. Um other conversations with Northern Health uh revolved around the regional transportation initiatives, um the potential scheduled bus service, um work with NDI and uh the the pilot project from a uh the coordinating services and the appointments uh at at other facilities to support non emergency uh patients out with, yeah, patients. So. And the last but not least, UBCM policy uh developments. We, I did meet with the policy analyst uh with Barca Hoda. Um because I promised I wanted to meet him face to face or in person to discuss the concerns I had uh with the selection of the committee for the Edma regulations and uh actually invited fellow CAO Sean um from uh PRD.
Sean Dolan.
John Dolan. Um and uh John's joke was always just play bad cup, bad cup. And they're sort of a big good cop. Um but similarly, I mean, we're in the same boat, right? When I and I, you know, with with Sean's permission, when I sent the uh correspondence previously to to UBCM, to the To U B C M, to the executive, I acknowledge, I, I wanted to not just encompass our eighty. Eighty five thousand square kilometers of area that we represent. I want to also acknowledge a hundred thousand, a hundred and five thousand. It took essentially just two hundred thousand between us and P R D and, and the closest representations Prince George. Right? And, and question the, question how the committee was picked, what credentials they required. Who reviewed the credentials and, 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 right? And uh. I mean, I, the ship of sail, I mean, the committee's picked and whatnot and, but at the end of the day, it was, it was just a, anything you felt could have wasted concerns in person. And have the conversation and there were some commitments of follow up that were going to be made in terms of. How is our voice going to be heard as, as an organization and, and P R D is as, as an example, as they do go through this. Um, so we've got some, myself and Sean will be doing some follow up with that. Um, because there were some commitments in terms of timelines and what they would do and. Whatnot. So. And that's U B C M, a week's worth of sixteen meetings and. Forty five minutes or less.
There was one thing I thought you missed with uh Hydro. We asked them and it's a follow up thing to give us the criteria. Required for a contractor to do right away.
Yeah.
Because we have contractors here that potentially might just need to upgrade a little bit, like any, any of the wildfire folks that saw you, Laverkus and her crew.
Yeah.
Potentially could be contractors to do that. So we wanted to know what the criteria were so we could pass that along. Local contractors who might be able to then actually upgrade whatever they, to whatever level they needed so that then they could bid on that work. Yeah. But yeah, to providing that information, that's a follow up thing for us to. To follow up with them and, and find out what those criteria are. Yeah, because they said they would, they would provide that to us. So we'll do that.
And the last, I want to thank Aaron and Jay for taking excellent notes because if, if they didn't, I couldn't sit here and do this.
Yeah.
But frankly, so um, it was, it was excellent notes that were taken and it's, I think uh, you know, the. I think the discussions are worthwhile. We actually are down there representing the organization, the community and, and the organization. Um, I guess this, this year was a bit of a unique year with the, with the uh, with the election occurring and, and. So there was, the, the, the engagement seemed a little bit different from a couple for sure. Um, I think. Uh, Mr. Farm was not because he wasn't coming back anymore. Yes. But uh, which is unfortunate because he's been an ally for us, but uh. All in all, it was a, it was a busy week for the conversation. I think it went well and I think we presented the information quite well and represented the organization.
Yeah, I think the process we use is a good one. You know, I think uh. Having council support and, and staff support there to really capture the, the notes because you're in the moment, right? We're, we're in the moment, the three of us when we're, when we're talking. And so it's great to have staff there to, to capture all the information that you just.
You can't talk and take minutes at the same time or scribe this evening. Well, Jay kind of does.
Not in fifteen minutes, not in, not in a fifteen minute.
A lot of information, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So just to the council people that went, did anybody make it to any of the resolution sessions or?
I made it, I made it to a, to a few of them. Um. They, they didn't get to the, to the ones that I was interested in and I'm, I'm just drawing a blank now on, on which one it was, something to do with the. With natural gas. And it just.
It was uh banning any fossil fuel producers from sponsoring.
That's right. That's, that's what it was. And they, they didn't, they didn't get to it. And so they, they were just, what they do with those is they take it to the executive then.
Hmm.
And let the executive decide what to do.
And the trade show was good.
Trade show was, was pretty good. We didn't get an awful lot of time.
Smaller.
Yeah, it was definitely smaller, definitely.
Because last year took up both sides, right? This year it was just the, the half side. But yeah, it was good.
Yeah, thanks.
Next year in. Victoria, then back to. Vancouver then. Yeah, because it was a double two years in a row. Might have been the pandemic that might have thrown off the schedule. I'm not sure because they didn't, but. I'm not aware of any communication in terms of the, the change of the cycle, but we had two years in a row in Vancouver.
Okay, any other questions for Scott? Okay, uh, is there any, there's no new business. So is there any public online that have any questions? No? Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you staff for that report. It was good.